So I would like to call the Grotton Board of Education Special Meeting to order. Today is February 13th and it's about 6:04, 6:05. And so the next thing on our agenda is our budget work session. I do want to let you know that on number three is the vote, but that it is there. Not because we have to take a vote, but that we can't add it to the agenda because it was a special meeting. So we are more than welcome to table it if we need it. I just figured if we were ready to go, we could, we could go for it. So please, there is no, in my mind, there is absolutely no rush to do that. The 28th is quickly upon us, but we are here. So without further ado, I'm going to place this conversation back over to Susan and her staff. Hi. So I, one of the things that I did was I tried to really provide a lot of information in board notes. I resent them out just in case you didn't receive them. They are, they do have the link, so if you would prefer having the attachment separately, we can provide that. For the people in the room, I actually made photocopies, starting with the adjusted budget and some of those documents that I provided in the board notes that help explain some of the questions to ask. We can just, just two here. Clint, did you want a copy of each of these? Sam? And did you get a whole set? Oh, really? It also looks like you sent this afternoon answers to some of the budget questions that were in the board notes. Is that correct?
And I also sent out an enrollment history that was requested, so I'll pass that along to you. That was a document that Ken had actually provided in the budget book. But as you know, when we clean up that budget book, we take in really all the information as we all collected it. And Joan collected it and has answered to, you know, what was transpiring in the meetings. We cross-reference those to try to really get at all the questions and answers and to update the narrative. So when the decision is made regarding the board's budget, then we'll be sending out revised copies of everything, the new charts, the new graphs, the new narratives. So we'll try to really clean it up for you. So I think the first thing we should do is take a look at the adjusted budget. And we can kind of explain how the staff took the messaging from the board and the community and tried to tackle some of those areas that we heard loud and clear that really we could reduce without. You know, my, my, my vision is always what impact does it have on our students and, you know, and our teachers and their learning so they can provide for the students. So I, you know, I always keep that in mind when making any decision. Can we do this and still make the progress that we need to make, especially after COVID? So if we could maybe put that up so everybody out there can see it, people around the room. It's that copy that has the yellows might remind you of the days when Mike was here and he would provide such a launching pad. I did have communication with Mr. Burt, had a really good conversation. You can see we talked about a lot of things. So some of these things were discussed. He also agreed that he's seeing for the town side that inflation has paid, played a big role in the town's budget. And I'm understanding that our budget that the taxpayers are responsible for, which is that 60% is about half of what the taxpayers pay for the whole town. So they pay the other half is for the town side of business and half is for the education side of business. So, you know, and he agreed, everything has gone up. Of course, salaries and benefits are the largest part. They're three quarters of our budget. What do we give kids in school these days? The best, highest qualified teachers, parents, you know, tutors, custodians, principals and assistants. So, you know, we really, we do really focus on that since I've been in Grotton. That's all we've ever, we've really been devoted to that and the board has been devoted to making sure we do that. So the bus contract, as you know, came in at over a million dollars the first year, the bus bid, I should say. The attorneys are looking at it now, so it hasn't been finalized and we will make sure the board knows when it's about to be finalized. But we were able to, because the highest bid was STA, we were able to do some negotiations. And I said, we just can't be hit a million dollars in one year. What can, what can we do? And, you know, Ken and Sam and I and Phil kind of looked at our numbers and said, what would be really doable? It's a three-year contract with the, you know, possibility of having your four and five extended. And in this model, we've been able to take, tackle that, that big jump pipe in the first two years. Then your three is better and your four and five are like a gift, I think. So it may be to our benefit. So it was kind of like a win-win. We won in the beginning not to have to pay that million dollars out of the gate. And then in the end, not to, you know, to have a 3.7% increase the last two years if we decide to do it. So, so you see that savings of $300,280 right off of that. And then they also were offering, and even though it's a post the $6,000 bill, every, every bit counts in this budget. And I heard loud and clear from the smallest thing that we could shave off to the largest thing. We were paying attention to every detail. The board was really highlighting those things if we want. So, so they will take care of this transportation software, which we're hoping will cost some efficiencies in travel and, you know, in getting kids back and forth and pine and, and all of that. And numbers of kids so that there's not too many on one bus and not enough on another. So then, of course, the recalculation of diesel fuel and heating oil. Every time I have to go write EverSource a check, I just grimace. And I know people out there are feeling the same pain, you know, there, those bills have doubled. So, you know, that's a real hardship. And I understand families at home also have that hardship, but they're, they're really happening in our business world and in our schools. And then we had, I think we might have had teacher number 13 send in a retirement letter today. So even though we do have the contract to have them share with us when they plan to retire by January. So it helps us, some people just, you know, come along later in the spring and say, well, I'm kind of ready now, so I'm going to do it. So we did get another retirement and so we didn't add that calculation in here, but we will. You know, it's always when we have retirements and then we post for new hires, they're usually our teachers who are at the lower steps. And so there is some benefit cost savings that we see, but they also, we owe them a pension that we owe in Grotton too. So, and what is that for them?
Yes, make that be around.
And is that with all teachers or is that, was that done historically for a certain group and then changed it all in the contract? I can't remember that.
Yeah, it's changing the contract, it was still working.
And then we did have to hire an additional school secretary. I think when we moved the two schools into the larger school, there was still a need in the front office to have additional support. One person who was doing it, it was just way too much. That is a very big school, it's a very bustling school, things are going on. And so we, we actually needed to take care of that for Grotton Middle School early on in this year. And we were able to have the funds to afford that and we need it going forward. One of the things we did last year that we decided to do again this year, we looked at anything possible, ArcES. And we looked at what we had spent with HVAC because we really did a good job taking care of the HVAC that were emergency and needed right away. That auditorium might actually be cool at the beginning of the year when we go to do an opening day. Because, you know, we never know what's going to happen with that air conditioning. So hopefully this will, this will help. But one of the things we had done with custodial supplies, we put in ArcES or because we could, we had written that grant and the grant was provided that we could do those things. So that instead of operations, we're able to pay for it there. We've also had a real accomplishment in special education by providing so many high-quality programs for students who have high needs. And so many of those students have come back to us. Many of them have graduated. So we looked at the real numbers because we have someone in the business office who is constantly looking at magnets and out of state, out of town, you know, tuitions, and that has so helped us because when we first got here, that was like nobody really knew. And so having someone in the business office looking at that all the time is really important. And then I'll switch over health insurance and let you talk about it. I don't know if Lori is on here too, but I know that you can help us through the health insurance revised bid RFP. That's line number 10.
Yeah, so we, we're with the town with our, for our health insurance benefits. And we go out to bid every, every three to five years. And we're currently in one of those years where we're going up to bid. And we have gotten back some of the bids and Anthem has lowered some of their rates, so they're more competitive. And so we're reflecting that here. It's firstly, what we originally put in last November was based upon initial review by, by MDT our health insurance.
So that was a savings of $100,000. And I didn't mention the number, but special ed looks like 192.8 thousand. So, you know, and, but, you know, we are a military community, we're a transient community. You can have a child move in from Hawaii, from New London, and you could have a big bill. I'm hopeful that, watching legislation as I am, I'm hopeful that in that bill 5003, where the possibility of paying for the magnet costs will, will be a benefit to us as we come off the cliff. But we will always be responsible for our children who live in Grotton and rent their head in Grotton to pay for their special ed costs. So no matter what, that will always be a cost that they are also looking at, the excess cost. So when a child has, let's say, $100,000 placement out of town, that's an excess cost. So that, the legislation is working to have that fully, fully covered. We'll see what happens. No promises, but that's out there. And then you might want to talk a little bit about the town pension. That was a bill, we got a check, we got a bill for $153,000. And I did talk to John about that, you know, we reached out to his business office to really find out, you know, what is that for? Lori had the sense that we've had quite a few custodians retire and they would have been part of the town pension. It's not a lot of people who are eligible, but there are a few who are non-union or those would be union custodians. Those both union and non-union people.
So, so an actuary calculates what the, the actuarially determined contribution should be. And we just got that report last week from the town and it was, it had increased by, by $150,000. So we are reaching out to that, that actuarial group to find out what is driving that, that increase cost. But we just thought that we have had some retirements that might be driving that.
Now, would that continue each year at that price or?
Yeah, the actuaries, they, they recalculate every year. Presumably, I don't know, I don't know exactly what it would be.
And then adjustment to workers comp. And Lori and I had this conversation, you know, during COVID when we had fewer students here and we had hybrids. So they were half class sizes and kids were behind masks and, you know, kind of very subdued and quiet. And, you know, we weren't getting the injury that, you know, after COVID and people coming back, we've experienced more of that. So this was like a benefit, I think, benefit due to COVID, you know, that we had fewer of the workers comp claims at 68,897. Then the SRO cost just went up slightly to $3,220. Reduction to teacher health immunization. One of our board members pointed out that she had noticed a trend that, you know, we didn't seem to be spending that full amount. So we did look at that and we said, you're right, and every thousand dollars, every $1,250 counts. So we were able to trim that back. I guess, Phil, if you want to speak, well, PD related to mathematics, it was a $40,000 bill. And there were a lot of questions about that PD, but if you want to speak to that.
Well, we said we wanted to go back and review for the last PD to look for other funding, you know, other ways to fund that. And then obviously with our goal as we move forward to be more, to build our capacity. At level, I think we're able to find other ways to fund that.
And that was through DOD supplement. And then possibly DOD, we're looking at the next grant already with DOD. And then, and professional development with DEI as well. I think you were going to go back and look at the different costs that had come in and try to see if we could work with the people who are coming to work with our middle school, high school and.
And that initial cost was based on initial conversations with those people that we're, that we're currently working with in terms of maybe expanding services for next year. So we're hoping that, because our relationship has been so positive, it's been a negotiation and then finally, again, finally the way.
So that was our first layer. So it's kind of like a layer cake. That was the first thing we did and notice we didn't touch health savings in that first portion because we were really trying to be careful. But we were able to take basically, you know, a close to a million dollars and bring it down a full percentage point, where it was almost at 5%, at 498, now it's down to 393. And we knew we had to do better than that, so we continued. And then we looked at the health reserve and you might want to explain how we were able to figure out that number because we looked at data historically and what we had paid into it and what, what the account was looking like.
Yeah, so, you know, we do have a balance. We calculate the balance for the end of this coming fiscal year of around $2 million for the health reserve above corridor. And so we, you know, there is room to make some additional adjustments and reduce, reduce that reserve further.
And then one of the deductions that I feel really confident in, based on the number of retirements that we've had and based on the work that we're doing with Power School experts in recreating master schedules with the middle school, high school. This board is very much aware that there are some class sizes with under a dozen. And, and, and really, they don't really go past 24. And that's in the middle school and at the high school. And we know that this good work that we're doing will be able to, and because we share campus, will be able to have the appropriate number of staff to be able to really fully stack both of those schools with this FTE reduction. And I've always said that really it's the FTEs that give you the, kind of the biggest deduction. But we don't want to lose our teachers, especially, you know, to have huge class sizes. We know that the Board of Ed honors those suggested numbers that they have that are actually better than the contracted numbers, contracted numbers. So, you know, that's between like 20 as a kindergarten, maybe in culinary arts, you know, depending on the classroom size and that kind of thing, to 24, 25 in some of the upper grade. So we're very cognizant of that, but I do feel that that's doable. And we are also creating more semester classes. And semester classes will give kids better access to different, you know, kind of enrichment opportunities. And, you know, we can't really do that with the core classes, but we can do it for a lot of the electives. So both the middle school and the high school is looking forward to that. And then, you know, so that brought it down to 3.77% and, or 3.45.
I was going to say.
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at the long line. And that's down to, you know, 2.7 million dollar increase. And then finally, I said, what about if we look at the health reserve one more time and tell us where the, you know, how we, we determined this extra $100,000?
So this extra $100,000 really is, it brings down the health insurance costs to last year's or this year's level. So it's exactly equal to this year's level. And so that's, that's what that $100,000 represents, bringing it down so that there's no increase for health insurance cost.
And like I've said, we really try to be good stewards at the end of the year. Should there be some funding at the end of the year? You know, we don't just go and spend all the money, although we did tell the, the principals to, to leverage and, and not do the last quarter just to make sure that we have funds because we've had some things surprise us. You know, with maintenance that we've, repairs that we've had to have, increased costs, costs that we've had this year that we weren't prepared for last year at this time when we were doing this. So we're just being ever so careful. And so that's where that $81,789,411, which is a $2,632,140 increase or a 3.33%. So I do have some backup documents, but I want to stop sharing now just to get people's feel for this. And then any, you know, we can go through some of the questions and answers and documents that were backups for this.
It looks like Lori is with us now too there. Jay, did I see you raise your hands?
I guess. Few questions. The cost of the transportation software from the IP budget, where is that being made out now? That STA is picking that up?
The STA is going to pick that up. They're going to, they have their own transportation and it's an updated upgraded one. And they know how to use it and we're going to learn how to use it. So I feel like there, that's that partnership that is really, I think, really strengthened. I have to give Sam a lot of credit and his team here for strengthening that bond and really making it a better working partnership, you know, in the past year or so.
The $153,000 increase in town pension, so is this basically equivalent to OPEB? Is our OPEB contribution going up by, keeping in mind, there's, there's still going to be a deficit at the end of the year. It's as it is.
Right, so these are two different things. So OPEB, that's other post-employment benefits. We have not received that, that report yet from the town. So that is, that is still to be, but we did get the pension, which is a different, different program that covers the three, three groups within the Board of Ed, which is the custodial maintenance group, secretaries and the C central office staff.
So they keep this pension fund separate? What we refer to with OPEB?
Correct.
Which is other.
Other post-employment benefits, yeah. That's, that's more health benefit where the pension is more of a pension.
Okay. Now, at this point then, for OPEB, we're just budgeting.
We're budgeting the same, same amount of last year.
Because you'll get that actuarially reported after we do this meeting, right?
It usually comes out around this time. I would have thought we might have had it by now, but it's around this time that we get it.
The workers comp, just like with the health insurance, are we basically self-insured?
We are self-insured.
Yeah, so reinsurance backup.
Yep, yep.
And that's all done through them.
Right.
So they're the ones who are going out and getting bids.
Do you all sit in on that at all?
We do.
Because I know that they're always invited, Lori and Ken always, and I've gone to some of those too. Yeah.
So we're sharing reinsurance costs. Percentage of.
Yeah, yes, yep.
The use of the mathematics, professional development and DEI is kind of a change in our overall use of DOD supplemental. I'm saying I'm against it, I'm just noting that in the past, we have, if our DOD supplemental were technology. And I did want to address that, but I'm not sure if that's better addressed once we start to move.
Well, you see the splash next DOD, should we get DOD? We can put it there, we're, we're planning on that, but should we not get it then? Because we have to have a backup system that it would be, I mean, there are no parameters on DOD. There is a chart I want us to review before the end of tonight that looks at what if we don't get the number of kids we need? We had impact aid meeting after impact aid and we're really close, we might not be there. So we've got to find out more, you know, should we not have a year of, you know, making the number?
I do want to discuss that, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Do we, I'm wondering if you just tell us what you're thinking and then I think we can revisit that also when we move the number. Because we may not move the number tonight.
Right, well, at some point, I'm going to move a different number. One of the ideas I had is that we reallocate software, object code 612, which is clearly the 98,637 from that account to DOD supplemental, along with the computer network, certainly increases not the entire quantity.
Can you tell me where you are?
Well.
Are you going into, you're in, you're in the budget?
Yeah, so it's, it's object code 612, well, finally, I'm actually talking.
Yeah.
Is that something you could pull up on the screen if we, if you know where he's talking?
So it's object, it's line 180, object code 612. Which sort of on stage two dash. Occasionally increases.
And basically what I hear you saying is moving that out of the budget and put it at the supplemental, which is what our historical premise has been, okay?
Now, keep in mind, I realize there's this concern that that's going to go away. However, we have no good feeling this year and we do have a plan, or even if those get phased out.
Right, right.
My concern is holding too much money in these accounts with the idea that maybe something is going to happen. All four, you know, gaming career, the possible bad effects, however, that phasing out is going to take like three years.
So what was that total amount when you added it up? You had the.
I was, I'm going to suggest that we move the 98,637 software.
So it's on page 25 and if you look at line 180?
I think he's going to pull it up.
Which is object.
The 98, okay, I see where you're at, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And again, I'm just talking, you know, we can bump with an actual figure when we're all done, but it's fill us out what we talked about. And we move more things into the account.
I know we looked at that, right Clint? Did we, we kind of tackled that because I said the same thing you're saying, Jay. Are there, are there funds within the, the technology department? I mean, every, every director has, you know, sat at this table and like really looked at the situation too. But, so there's that and there was another one you had mentioned?
Yes, so if we look at line. Six. Sorry, this is not.
That's all right.
Yeah, 2-4, line 6, object. Go 343, increase 13,362. Now, keep in mind, the board can decide to allocate even more than this number. I just chose to pick off the increases. And again, my. And again, my reasoning is. How many years? Of funding should we? Be keeping. In these accounts at the expense of. You know, charging off.
So I think that, okay, I think if we could take a look at that chart, the DODIA chart. That um you had presented because I think. We um, not that we want to discount that, but just to review what you're talking about. So anybody who's on the public can kind of better understand that. So that was this chart. And um, Ken is gonna. Pull it up. Yeah, it was, yeah, it's in your packet tonight. It was in your board notes. We actually looked at it a bunch of time. But there's a lot of charts and graphs we've given you.
Yeah.
I don't know. Can we move the um, the people part at the top or something or move it over?
Just shrink it.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Nobody to look at.
So Ken, do you want to orient us to what this is all about? Because. You're right. Actually, the actual amount ending in twenty twenty two was a large number, one million, three hundred sixty five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. And forty cents.
Yeah, and so uh you'll see the, the yellow column, that's what we're estimated to utilize this year. Uh, and you'll see that we, we are planning on, we are, have utilized uh three hundred and twenty four thousand for software. Um, a hundred forty three thousand for uh equipment and a hundred thirty eight thousand for staff devices. As well as um, uh, we had put in there the literacy and math universal screeners.
Which are acquired by the state and intervention tools and they're all. Technology driven. So, and they're acquired also by C T Seds and special ed. Features have to now, really for every goal they write on every child, they have to have evidence of growth. And they're showing that through these universal screeners. And um, while we have lots of assessments, this is kind of something new that the state is expecting. And unfunded mandate.
I was just gonna say.
And and that seventy five thousand isn't just for. For this year, it's estimated to go into like next year too. Like it's a couple of year process that we're gonna have both math and literacy. So the seventy five is.
For both twenty four and twenty five.
Right. And we're working on deciding we're doing some pilots free of charge and we're having teacher input and all of that. So that brings us down to a million dollars.
Yes.
And then when we budgeted for next year.
Next year, we are budgeting um. You utilizing this fund to pay for some software and again, some IT equipment and staff devices. Uh, and so we're at this point projecting having a, a balance of nine hundred thousand at the end of next year.
So we need nineteen point five percent. So here's my plug for impact aid. I'm working with Miranda, working with the Navy, making sure every child that's military connected. The state has one number, Power School has another number, and the Navy has another number, and none of the numbers add up. To the same number. So it's like shooting in the dark. We really are having a hard time. Calculating this, but we're not at nineteen point five percent of our population at this point. We're under that. And if you're under it by a child or a hundred kids. You're under it. And Ken is gonna put in a call. To find out how does that impact impact aid? How do those numbers, that nineteen point five? And then there's a twenty percent too. How does it impact the impact aid number that comes directly to the town in the way of about four million dollars as average? Or over the past several years and it goes right to the town to pay for education for all kids. Um, then there's the supplemental. Um, which you're looking at, D O D. And that's, like you said, that's what really has been the. Forefront. And from what I understand from board members who've been on this board for a long time, it's always kind of been that way. That we've used it for technology. Um, and then there's those DODIA grants that come at a million dollars and we're working on our next year's DODIA. Um, and I'm even thinking ahead of that the following year, how that can help us. You know, with our inter district magnets and our M Y P and our international baccalaureate districts. So. Um, just always thinking ahead, we're here, what would happen if we could, you know, extend this project and. DODIA appreciates that about Groton, that we. Like um, continue and make it even richer and better, you know, for the kids. So that's just the, that's the only question mark. That we, we have that. So if it doesn't come in. I guess you have it coming in in twenty twenty four at four fifty and then, you know, we're hopeful, but we're not certain. And then what happens if it doesn't come in the next year and the following? In the following year?
Trad traditionally, we, we utilize this fund to, to uh support the one to one initiative. And and other. Technology initiative.
And if uh the worst case scenario occurs. We'll be able to continue to do that. Even. With the account as it is for what, two years past? At which point?
Well, i- as soon as we stop getting that four hundred and fifty dollars. You can see it really peters out within a couple of years.
But my point is, we, we only are allowed to do a budget. So in order to, to start allocating things that go out two to three years is really beyond our.
It's just a forecast. It's just saying if we just stuck to the bare bones basic of what we could. And need to do to support students and learning. Um. That's what we're forecasting.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I. I can't see charging taxpayer. On the basis that the worst case scenario might happen because a number of other worst case scenarios could happen. At all different.
Well, that's true. That's true.
And so I think we need to, to, to.
Well, you can see that we have done that for F Y twenty twenty four.
I just.
Yeah.
I, this. This budget number is not. Is not sustainable. And so I think we need to give it five ways to. To whittle it down. Because as we know, the three point three three, then. Once we apply the formula for how much that's gonna affect. About taxpayer, that, that number we're in the news.
So I did ask John Bird the question, what does that mean? And he really couldn't answer it for me. Um, so. You know, and we were looking at what first came out as eight percent. With this three point three three plan, it would really be five point five percent. But does that, you know, what does that mean for the average taxpayer? Is it a cup of coffee? Is it a? Is it a rent check? Is it, you know, what, what does it really mean?
Well, we don't know that until they roll out the. We, we, we don't know how to compute it to the new tax payer. Till finance department. Uh, rolls out the rent.
So we have last year's. So we're able to look at that, right? To see what that meant at two point two two.
Either way, I just, I, I just want. I don't want to lose track of the fact that the percentage that you see here is not, it's. The past.
Matthew?
The grand list was a question for me too, and I wondered if John had discussed, can you hear me? I wondered if John and you had discussed what they see coming onto the grand list for major projects.
I asked that question. I think you got my notes, my very copious notes of all the questions that I asked. And um. He really um. Was not able to foresee. Or didn't mention what that was. Um. So. I'm just looking back.
We're also, I think, at a bit of a disadvantage insofar as the, some of the proposed legislation at the General Assembly. Could be very favorable to us. Of course, there are no guarantees for any of it.
Yeah.
But we're taking the worst case scenario on every, and I'm sure this is true, I'm hypothesizing. We seem to be taking the worst case scenario for each particular thing. And my guess is that the aggregate, there won't all be worst case scenarios. But I don't know how you measure that.
Well, I think we're, we're taking worst case scenario for what we're experiencing today for next year. So we, we know, you know, this board does a great job negotiating those contracts. And we know what those contracts say. We have one coming up. And we know what the competitive wages are in the area and what we might have to do. So, you know, we're just basing it on the data that we have to date. Um, it's very hard to forecast and predict. Next year at this time. Um. I mean, one of the things I also addressed was non-town revenue. I think um Jay had mentioned this right off the bat, that boy, the revenue that comes in the town has stayed pretty. Status quo, which thank goodness, because there was a time when it, they were talking about cutting ECS on us. So. You know, that's actually good news, but. When we looked at what is budgeted, so we have to budget for what we think is gonna come into the town. And we've been off by ten million dollars. So that's a chart I'd like to bring up and show you. Um. In other words, the town has received ten million dollars more than what we've predicted since two hun- two thousand eighteen. To two thousand twenty two. So I said, thought Ken did a marvelous job on this chart. And I had put this into my board notes as well. But. If you do such a better job orienting us.
So the, the top section here, this is the actual amount of um. Of non-town revenue that was received uh over the, that. That five year span, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two.
Um, so the twenty five million in ECS has been pretty status quo. Right? So maybe pointing out, what are some of the things that have? Moved. In a bigger way?
Yeah, and you'll, you'll see the, the, the pupil, the impact aid number, um, you know, it kind of goes up and down, but it's around four million dollars, three, seven in twenty eighteen. Actually went to five, two, twenty nineteen. Three, nine, four, two, and three, nine. So, you know, uh, there's a little bit of movement there. But overall, you can see that our, the actual received is, is around thirty to thirty one million over this five year, five year span on average. Um, the section down here, this is what we budgeted. So this is what we had told the town we expected to receive. And you can see that um, the revenue collected over the budget is that ten million dollars that uh that Susan had mentioned. Um, half of it being in twenty eighteen, we, we budgeted uh, quite a decrease in the ECS. We budgeted twenty million but got twenty five.
I think you remember those dates. Not an easy time.
And then the remainder of that excess really is, is coming from the impact aid that um, that we budgeted at a lower rate at three, two or, or so. But it came in more around four million dollars.
It wasn't until last year, I think I, you remember my saying, it's really coming at four million. We have to, since it comes directly to the town and everybody says, well, what happens if it comes in over? And that was my question. It goes to a general fund. From my understanding, and my question then followed, well, does, can that be relief? But by the time they receive it. They've already set the mill rate. So there's like not any paying back to the community. So, and I, and I said, well, could we use? This ten million dollars, we could really use some of that now and for some of these projects. Um, and he just kind of smiled at me, but I did ask the question. You know, if this isn't a general fund and it was meant for education. Could it not be used for education?
Well, New York State Department of Education had a similar problem about fifteen, twenty, twenty five years ago. And they came up with what they called lag funding. And to use your example, if there were ten million dollars. The way the process worked, they could not allocate that year, but they set it aside. So once you got through that initial lag. Any overage would come to you if we set aside to be offset some of the expenses.
This would be an excellent non-lapsing fund.
No, it's a lag.
Yeah, I know. I heard you.
However, that money doesn't go away. I mean, that's why it sits in the general fund. And then we calculate that for the next year's budget. So yes, we're always a year behind. But isn't like that money just disappeared and the town is still. Supporting education to the extent of its bottom line, which is its tax collection.
Oh, absolutely there. Absolutely there.
It's not as though that's going into some account that we can write a check out of, so. You know, it's. For anyone who might be following along at home. Sounds like there's some ten million dollars sitting. It, it still gets accounting for, which is why it comes into the uh, general fund. My overall idea with, with, with it, it comes to. The U L B supplemental, and then also I want to address the uh health insurance reserve at some point. Is that we should not be. Allowing too much to accumulate. On the basis that something horrible may happen. If something horrible happens, then in that next budget, we'll have to make adjustments. But in the meantime, this money is sitting, as Dr. Morgan properly pointed out, not earning. Anybody.
I asked that question too. I asked him to look at the interest rate. You know, it's at one percent. And there's a lot of money sitting there that could be, and he said he would check on that. So they will take a look at.
So I guess I would rather see taxpayer relief. Than a one percent return. So that's, that's just the. One of you that, that I take. Uh, to get this number down. And again. Even if the grand list were to double, I don't believe that that justifies. Raising taxes. The, you know, the, the increase in the grand list should never be a justification for, okay, now we have the ability. To tax more, so let's do it. It should always be, what do we actually need?
Right.
And so you notice that nowhere along the line of my suggesting we start laying off teachers or staff. Or cutting into anything that really affects students, but rather allocate. These funds that are held in other accounts.
Right, right.
To fund what we want to accomplish.
Jay, can I ask, do you feel there's more money for us to then take out? Is that what you're? Is that what you're wondering about?
Yeah, well, the other, the other thing I wanted to discuss was the insurance reserve, you know, but I, again, I don't know if we want to get into that now or.
I said, put it, let's put it on the table. Yeah.
So my concern about the insurance reserve is that um, we're projecting. A balance of two million, fifty thousand dollars above the core. Um. So I looked at what was one of our worst years. Thank you to uh. To uh Ken through Susan's permission, of course, uh, for bringing up these reports, but. Um. Very sort of the hype, I suppose, of the pandemic or the aftermath of the pandemic. It looks like we cut into the reserve by about twenty thousand dollars. So. My idea is that. We don't need to. Continue to reserve at the level we are, which is already twenty five percent. We already have a twenty five percent quarter of a cost. So that's like worst case, like if, if the two million went away, we'd still have this other quarter. To protect the account. We wouldn't stop paying clients. I just think we need to use a larger amount. Um, I, I was happy to see these allocations uh for the health reserve reduction. You know, I'd like to see us take more out and I don't see where. Again. We're wanting to.
Last year, how much did we, how much did we take out last year? You recall?
Uh, I don't.
I feel like every year we've taken out.
Yeah, I.
There was one year that we took out way too much, I think.
Yeah, I didn't make this case last year because I wasn't sure what the. Effect of the pandemic would be.
Right.
And so I didn't make this argument last year. I believe that now we've seen the history. Whether that was the worst case scenario, I don't know. It was indeed that scenario. Um, and so I believe that um. Uh, we need to allocate more of this toward, toward our budget than we need. And I would propose taking another five hundred thousand. Uh, allocate another five hundred thousand on the reserve. And we could bring our um. Proposed increase down to two point five five percent. Which, you know, still translates to four point one eight percent increase to the town. It's not like two point five five. Flat, but at least it's allocating more of what we have. Before we look at. I mean.
What does that five hundred thousand look like? So in addition to the already two. So in addition to the already two. So you're talking about seven thousand, seven hundred.
It so so it would we would it would bring the um the health insurance reserve down, um I still think we'd be within that um. A month's worth of uh claims over uh over the over the corridor.
But just one month?
But one month, but yeah, and the other thing I just want to caution is that uh I I think I believe we spoke about this before, but the stock loss um. Uh lasers, uh that's that's where our stock loss uh identified particular claims that they will. Uh not cover at the stock loss threshold of two hundred thousand, but instead uh cover it at six hundred thousand. They they made very specific uh lasers, what they they call laser. Um, and so I just just cautioned that 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 has not yet um been reflected in our reserve because it hasn't uh reached that level, so.
The worst-case scenario, since we've talked about worst-case scenarios, is we we go, we take this cut. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in healthcare, and you have a stop-loss gap that year of. Up to six hundred thousand?
Uh, it would be it would be the the four hundred thousand.
Difference between the two and the six, that would be another four hundred thousand.
That that could possibly uh uh impact the reserve. I just want to make sure we we're all understanding that that there's extra pressures on on the reserve.
So looking at July of twenty twenty-one through uh. February twenty twenty-two, the deepest cut we saw to the reserve supposed to be six hundred ninety-three thousand. Do we have any recollection as to whether any um claims would laser?
No, the so that this is the first time this this year, this year and next year.
We've never had that before.
Yeah, we didn't have it before, so this is this is a a new development that the uh stock loss uh insurance companies are implementing.
And we're lasering how many claims?
Uh, there's two claims, one for the town, one for the board.
At this year, this point in this year.
For this year and next year.
And next year, okay.
With with my proposal, we'd still have. So I'm just saying that. Taxpayers can only one percent on this? We're even earning anything on the reserve, I'm not even sure the reserve is generating. Or we can reduce the the taxpayer. Again, we left it last year.
I thought we did take from health savings every year.
Take an adjustment um based upon the uh the anthem. Proposed renewal, uh we did take a a reduction. But not in these levels, more like a hundred, hundred twenty-five.
But there were years that we took some deep cuts. When Mike was here. And I know Mike was always cautious because the year he came in to be superintendent. They had decide, I think there were big special ed budget. Items, and I think they had to use health reserve to take care of some of those other costs.
You make a very persuasive argument. But I do have a question, there's another function. At least I'm imagining, I'm I'm imagining there's another function of this reserve. If we had some sort of disaster, or there was a a total loss of money from. The impact aid funds. Would using this money now reduce our flexibility to access some money if we had a future distribution? Is, and if the opportunity cost is the wrong word, I'll call it a flexibility cost, is there is there some risk to that? I'm not disagreeing with what you say, I'm just. This, this is a sum of money that lets us. Mitigate damage to the taxpayers, but we can't always predict what the next problem is going to be. To what extent do we find this sweet spot?
And at that point. If the worst-case scenario occurs, then you have to go back. To the the town, but again, you know, we what we're saying, the laser claim puts us. At three or four hundred thousand.
Quarter.
This is like one point three million. So, and again, I guess I would argue that we really can't be using this account to sort of ensure that account. You know what I'm saying, uh we are not allowed. As the town, the town is allowed to to set aside a um a fund. That they can use in future years, and we're not allowed to do that. At as a point of that, we cannot have a rainy day.
Well, health savings is a little more flexible, I think, you know, depending on how much we're pulling from it. And then paying ourselves back when we can, because you, when you pull it out, you really have to make up the difference, from what I understand.
Right, the in 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 the next year, you'd have to bring it back up to the level that they keep it uh.
Well, yeah, it's it's it, the 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 accounting of it is that you're reducing this year's contribution to the town. By the amount that you want to allocate to another line item in the budget. But you're you're basically using that balance to pay your premiums this year. And then, yeah, next year you go back to paying your your premiums as usual, but it's not as though. You've created a deficit that you have to pay back, you're saying, just continue paying your. You want to fix costs every month. And. If. If claims come in lower, the reserve continues to go up. And if not, you cut into it, but again, I mean, this is one of the worst-case scenarios. Where we we dug into it by twenty thousand dollars, but this year. I I'm just asking the question, and I believe uh I believe the counselor. And Brian was asking the same thing, is do we need that much? And he's a finance director for a. City, and he's looking at it the same way, how much do you have to pull back toward the possibility?
William, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted anybody to share an example in the past five or so years of. Something that it was alluding to when you have a budgetary thing during the year. Loaded. And we were able to get. Resources or money from the town, or what like what happened? Is there an example of that that we've had in the past five years where?
Not while Mike and I have been here, but before Mike got here, there was a situation where that they had not. Budgeted correctly for special ed costs, and that's what my remembrance was, and that um. And that they had to go back to the town, and I think they did decide to pull from health savings at that time.
So, so the town, though, is our resource, so if something does occur.
The town councillors who were sitting on that council at the time, maybe Dean was one of them. But they still remember that, that, you know, that Mike was the one, because, you know, he just took over as superintendent and had to go to the town.
We had, we had to fill up the the um this health reserve. But because that had been depleted two years prior to that, and that wasn't found out until the budgets started to be developed. So, yeah, that's that's what, that was like a one point four million dollar. That we asked that that we were that we were not going to use that for our budget, that that actually was going to be used to. To to make that whole, I don't know if the word whole means anything to that, but to make it whole.
So if we were to reduce the reserve by five hundred thousand. That's a central worst-case scenario.
You'd have to have. You'd have to have claims. In excess of contributions of over one point three million. To wipe out the reserve, and then you'd have to have another two point two four million. In excess claims to wipe out the corridor, or you've even touched the account. So, the reserve is the. It is the uh, is the approach of wearing the belt and suspenders. And the reserve is it are your suspenders. Now, I'm not certainly not suggesting going down to zero, I've heard of towns that do that. So this, there there are towns, the town, by the way, Ken, they they control this money, they can actually do in and take it, and other towns have done it. I'm not suggesting that Brian would do that, but it can be done, that the money is held in their accounts. But where you get into trouble is when your reserve is gone, and you beat into corridor, I don't know how long. At that point, you have to react, beating into corridors, that is the state or or government step in at that point.
Yeah, it it's part of a self-insured plan, so we're um when it's reviewed by by actuaries, so. They just take that into consideration.
I guess my question is, Jay, I'm 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 holding your information. Um, and it's not as if I don't believe you, I just, I kind of want to talk to the person who's sort of like. This is, this is what he does, so what what um, how much does this keep you up at night? When we think about taking seven hundred thousand to make our budget go down and not touching. The stuff that had that, not touching any of the educational, like losing staff or or cutting that, like what what does that do?
It it just, it just, it 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 just makes the margin of error lower, that's all, um, I think it's. Uh, I understand what Jay's saying, and it makes sense. It it just, it just, it it lowers that that reserve so that you don't have, if if more, if uh claims come in higher than you anticipate, you just. Don't have as much there to react with, but it's.
I see Lori Lapine is on there, I don't know if she wants to weigh in on this, um.
I also have Liz, yeah, also have a question.
All right, I've got it, I I I'm a visual learner, okay, stay on borrowing, okay. All right, so when we have. This coming in, okay, this is what we budget, correct? And this is how much people, the claims that come in. Where are the claims paid for, as out of the red? Or this is the reserve that's just not touched unless this exceeds.
Right.
And so if I'm understanding this correctly, this is the reserve, and this is the extra reserve.
And see that white section is the suspenders of the.
Yes, and that, well, that's why I was trying to understand, and that that finally made it make sense to me, thank you so much for the suspenders, because I think. But I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, this is a tough budget year, if we. You know, if we can reduce this part without impacting the what our people need. I think it's something that's worth really, really hammering out, thank you, Jake, for that, I I just feel like it's. Times are tough, and we have to cut, we have to tighten the belt.
Jay, are you, um, Dean, are you waving to people, or were you wanting to say something to the board?
No, that was just an errant left hand.
Hi. You look really nice where you are.
I'm I'm not, I'm yards away from Sea Lions, so I can't hear everything.
Good for you.
No, don't, don't let me interrupt.
Thank you, Dean. So I don't know, Lori, did she hear us? Because I know she handles a lot of this work with with, there she is, Ken.
Yes, I'm here.
So you heard the conversation, looking at the possibility of taking, like, post to seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the health savings account.
Yeah, yeah, so the only additional thoughts that I would share is um, think of the reserve as. You know, traditionally, when we schedule claims um, and the financial liability for those claims, it's not unusual for. Us to have maybe two or three large claims that go above the stop-loss in the course of a plan year. The reserve is really to help us, for example, I think we need to be thoughtful about. If we have more than that two or three large claims, which can happen, you can very easily have five, six, seven large claims in a year that go over the stop-loss. That is where the reserve would provide that relief for the board. So I think that's just something to be thoughtful of, I think um also there are healthcare treatments out there that are in the million-dollar range, we have been. Very fortunate, we haven't faced that dilemma, but I think that's where the corridor would come in for something really catastrophic. And we had, like I said, we have not had that experience, there's never any way to know if and when you're ever going to roll the dice and have that experience. So those are the only things I would share, and that coupled with the laser claims that Ken had mentioned. Um, that is new this year, that's going to continue to be an issue going forward. In how the stop-loss carriers have changed the way they do business, and they are passing some of that. Um, large claim liability back on to the self-insured um entity. Which in this case would be the board, so I think we got to be mindful of the um. You know, the laser claims, and then mindful of some additional large claims, which those can very easily produce themselves in the course of a plan year.
For example, give us a for instance of some of the things maybe we've seen this year or last year that. Without being specific, but how those would come in, the amount they would come in at.
Yeah, so um, I, without the reports right in front of me, it's hard to say uh exact numbers, but. It's not unusual in a plan year that we might see claims uh above the stop-loss that are in the, you know, three hundred thousand dollar range. So um, and Ken, feel free to chime in, you've seen the large claims as well, but that's not unusual where we're. Funding that additional liability over two hundred thousand for a handful of claims each year, luckily, they have not gotten. Up to the half a million range, um, which I think is why uh the reserve is in the condition that it's in. Um, I would say you could probably do a little bit more, as Ken said, but I just, you know, want to be sure that we're being. Uh, good stewards of our liability and risk, and just keeping that in mind when we make the decision. And then the only other thing I would share is uh we are underfunded in OPEB, so I think everybody's familiar with that, we've been working on. Increasing our support for that obligation, um but we still are at this rate. I think we are only about a million dollars to the good against a thirteen million dollar liability in OPEB. So um, Ken, feel free to jump in on OPEB if you'd like.
No, uh, you you got those numbers uh exactly right.
So anytime we have any excess in the in the healthcare reserve, we will try and um. Address our unfunded liability in OPEB at at the same time. So I would just put that out there to be thinking about as well.
Jay, and then one?
Either Lori or uh Ken, um, can you just remind us what the, you know, the laser decline is is one thing, what is the? The limit of the normal stock loss?
Our uh our stock loss limit is at two hundred thousand, so that means we pay the first two hundred thousand of a claim. Anything over and above that is is covered by insurance policy.
Except for this one.
Except for this one.
Is there a limit? Once once we go over the two hundred thousand, is there a limit on what they'll pay?
No, but but what it does impact, it impacts the future years um stop-loss premiums, because what the. Future uh years on your experience, so if you have a lot of uh uh claims over stop-loss. You'll end up paying more premiums in subsequent years.
Is it possible to to get a longer range history so that everybody can see and be comfortable with? How this account has operated over maybe the past five years, and how we look at a a budget history? You know, just so that we can see what are the standard increases, decreases, because I realize. That, you know, I'm asking a lot of you to like step out on faith, and I'm certainly not an actuary, but I do think we need to. You know, if if we're either going to pay now or pay later. We're either going to hold extra money in the event that there may be a large claim. And charge the taxpayer today, or we're going to have a large claim in two or three years. And have to go back and ask for a supplemental. But the point is, how much should we be holding on the possibility?
And I think we look at maybe, you know, however many years we can get, five to seven prior to COVID, because COVID was kind of an anomaly. Even though a lot of people needed healthcare, a lot of people were putting things off. So I don't know if that's the truest sense, so if we could go back. And look at a history, you know, that might have even started before Mike was here, I don't know if we can get those numbers, but. You know, during that time when it really did become a problem, but just to see, you're right, to see longitudinally what 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 was going on.
Well, we added five hundred thousand dollars to reserve just in May and June twenty-two, after. Perhaps the worst of COVID, we we still added five hundred thousand, sure, so my question is. During that uh this year, how many? So my question is, during that, uh, this year, how many stopped out? You know, so if we, if we had some kind of histories that shows inflow, the outflow, the reserve level and. The, the number of, of, of claims that hit stop loss during the particular year, and again, I know it's. Past performance is not.
Indicate future.
Future results, but how much of the taxpayers' money should we be holding on to? For the possibility that something could happen, keeping in mind we're still sitting on top of the two point two four.
Okay, then I was going.
Line thirty, is that OPEB, it's the second additional health reserve, is that in with the hundred thousand dollars? Is that OPEB?
No, that's just the, the regular health insurance reserve.
So you could, you, we were taking a hundred twenty-five and another hundred of the same.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like, um, this is what it would look like if you did this and additionally if we did.
William.
So have we optimized our insurance? To reduce claims as much as possible? Many organizations that have multiple layers of insurance. That takes care of whenever we have to pay X amount, the secondary insurance. Take on that, if it goes above a certain level, it takes on the next level. Actually looking at many states, they've really changed kind of the way they deal, especially with, with health insurance, but also with. Other forms of insurance like, uh. Claims for injury or things on property and stuff like that. So there's multiple layers of insurance that are catastrophe, hospitalization, you know, so. It, it does add up the amount that we're paying for insurance, but the amount of emergency fund that we need. Per events, you know, drops dramatically, and so I don't know if we. You know, looked at what are, you know, what is the best. Insurance process that we, in, in the state, like what? School district has the most efficient. Insurance process that leaves them at the lowest risk, yes, so their, their yearly, our yearly. Amount that we're paying might go up. But the amount of reserve that we might need might dramatically decrease because we have all these layers of insurance that will protect us.
That would be interesting, however, we have just finished. Uh, all of our contracts, right?
The other thing is we're, we're into the town.
Yes.
And is it their responsibility, does the town actually go out and do an RFP?
Yeah, they did that this past year on purpose.
Found that Anthem was still the best. For controlling claims.
I think their cost came in higher and when the RFP, they lowered it a little bit, so it was a competitive thing that they did.
How is that process viewed if you hit? You know, all the, the limits on these accounts, and I think you should do, sort of go back to the town for supplemental, I think you call it. Is that viewed as, how does that reflect on board, on Susan?
I've never had to do it.
Does anybody hear?
I, I don't, I, um, Beverly might know in terms of years past.
I'm just wondering if it is a reflection of poor planning or is it just bad luck because a lot of people.
Do we know how much the town allocates to their reserve?
They do more with their OPEB than they do with the health insurance. But they, they have kind of a rich OPEB account.
But we really should think about being on the same page as the town finance department. Like you said, that's best practice, because if, if they come back and say, oh, well. Councilman McBride was concerned about the percentage of. As a finance director in a, in a nearby city, he must have reason to be concerned about. And therefore. What is the best practice for the amount of reserves you set aside? I mean, Lori brings up though this other. Ticking time bomb that's ticking in almost every, uh, town and, and. Board event in Connecticut, and that is open. I mean, I don't know if anybody who's open is topped up.
Well, and I think we answered those questions, if you saw the question answered, McBride, about that ticking time bomb.
I also want to make sure that we are careful about what we get our percentage down. To, because it still may not be enough. For the other members of the body, but other bodies that we serve and, um, or that we are stewards with. Um, and so my concern would be, um, if we, if we tapped too low. I mean, if we, if we, if we got to that spot where Ken is no longer really comfortable. And we have to like then dip in even more, so like I'm, what my mind is trying to think of is what is that? Spot between. It, not that it's good enough, I'm not talking about good enough, it's that we're being responsible for the money that. Uh, for this money and that we're being good stewards, but that also if they come back and ask for more cuts. What does that, what does that look like for our budget? I guess that's where I'm.
My point is if we say, well, we're not willing to take this five hundred thousand, but then they cut us and take the five hundred thousand, is that safe?
Uh, absolutely, but, but I'm saying.
That's why I say we should allocate what we feel, we really should go with that, this is our best.
That would, that would bring us down to like four point six percent.
Uh, well, it would lower than that, but just on the part that's taxpayers. Yeah, like you're talking about the taxpayers, is that? If we, if we followed your plan. If, if we did the other, if we added the other five hundred, I don't mean your plan, but I'm just talking. Now, are you talking about, um, line fifteen and sixteen of the adjusted budget? Keeping that with DOD as well and, um, you know. Or are you saying put that back into the operating budget?
I just, just wanted to flag it for the, the board to realize that. I'm not opposed to, to lines fifteen and sixteen, but that it's a change in.
Even, it is a change, right? But it's not like, it's not allowed, so it.
No, I'm not suggesting, I just want you to realize that this is a change in our practice, but.
I'm, I must be terribly wrong. But at a point where social security goes up. Fifty-eight percent, six point eight percent, I don't remember the exact, you know, the CPI is up.
Six point five.
Six point five, and we're, I, I'm, I'm not arguing anything about, uh, Jay's presentation, I'm just. If we came to the, the school, to the town council and say we've got a budget with an increase half. Of whatever we got as a national increase. I know there are people who would like us to pay back the town for what we spent in the past, but. I'm not opposed, Jay, I just, uh, I don't get how we can really beat ourselves. Or having a budget that's half of what the rate of inflation is.
Well, and when you saw my first budget, it was nearly five percent, so I think, and I didn't hold back, I showed you what it would cost. You know, without adding really anything, and it was closer to five percent, so that really. Does tell us that that is part of what's going on here. But then we went to adjust it, we, we looked at items that we could, we could do, that were doable and that. You know, I, my last resort is to look at anything that would really sacrifice teaching and learning and kids and supporting teachers and all of that. You, you get creative looking at some of these grants we've received, competitive and, um, you know. Categorical, but I'm, William.
I mean, it's not so much the, the actual budget increase, so the budget four point nine eight percent. That's not really significant budget increase, but when you look at the first sign of, of taxpayer increase, I think that's really what. It's going to resonate with. The town council and, and public.
As it should.
You know, and then, that's really, it's an absolute power, but. For a budget that was. Not huge, like not a huge increase, fortunately will have a huge increase for the taxpayer, and that's.
Well, if the federal government could start increasing their end and supporting us. Um, we've got no increases for that over the, since twenty fourteen, then I know it.
And Dr. Ganitor was, uh, very fond of the findings. The state constitution requires state-education children. However, the ECS, the state contribution to our budget has been flat since.
I went back, uh, past twenty eighteen, I think it went up to twenty, I think it was fourteen, and it's been the same.
Yeah, the, the state ECS has been flat since twenty fourteen, so the. The, the, the question then becomes, and, and the taxpayers see the ARPA, the RBSR, they see. And, 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 and everyone in the administration should be, uh. Complimented that they've been going after these grants, getting these grants, but the taxpayer sees all this and they see the increase. What we have, uh, the portion of the. Iceberg that we're not seeing, all the things that are going to come off of grants. Security, the social workers, the tutors. And that's why I recommend that we can then under CPI this budget. Because then when that next phase comes in, all those things come off of grants. We haven't found other grants to cover that. Then it really snowballs, and again, I haven't suggested one. Anything that would affect students, I'm not saying, let's cut library books, I'm not saying, let's increase class size to forty. Not saying anything that's going to affect children, I'm just saying. That we need to allocate the, the money that's out there. And I know somebody uses the phrase good stewards, I think we are being a good steward to apply excess. I see as excess. Now, to Lori's point, we could send that entire. Reserve over to OPEB. You know, that's a whole nother thing that we really need to probably have a C to W about when the actual. Report comes in from the, um, actuaries. Um, but right now, you know. I would like to see a, a longer history of this account. So that everybody can see how it ebbs and flows. I, I just want to go to the town council and be able to say, we studied this very carefully and this is the only amount. Cause I don't want, like what happened years ago with somebody. Where they cut our budget and they ran over and said, take the rest of that reserve. I want to say this is the number we come.
And this is how we got there, and we got there because we took X amount of dollars out of our reserve.
And maybe my five hundred thousand is, is too. You know, too round, too clear cut, maybe Ken can develop some data to show.
Yeah, that, I guess, I think that that's what I'm, I'm thinking about, is that I, um, I, I, and I, I, I sent this consensus. Is, is that we need to kind of take a look at that again and to see where we, where we can do and the analysis. That we get from both Lori and for Ken, um. Okay, bye Dean, it's good to see you, sorry, I, I, I just got, I just got, um, I apologize. But like, I, I, I think, um, cause then that allows us to then kind of say. Um, and to your point, or to Lori's point about OPEB, I mean, like I think that that needs to be part of the conversation and when we give. Our percentage increase, what it is, we could say the reason why it's this. Is because we felt like this made more sense to give some more to OPEB because. We have been in such a deficit and this is what we're taking from the healthcare quarter so that people don't feel like that. We've got more money to take out than what we are. Am, am I hearing you correctly? Am I making sense? You keep on shaking your head, I'm, I'm assuming that, okay.
And I also think we should know what is the town doing? With their insurance and what is the town doing with their OPEB? Because if we're way off.
Their way off from us in the regular health savings, they're not doing what we're doing? And then they're, they're, they've done a better job with their OPEB. But we've done less well. Well, I think that we didn't know about OPEB until three, three years ago, four years ago.
The other piece, I think, that William's commented about reinsurance, multiple layers of reinsurance.
That's not, that is not in our.
We can suggest that the town do it the next time. I, I think we definitely should bring that up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not gonna, if, if, but I didn't think you were saying that this would help our current budget or this coming budget, William.
So, so when, when we look at the numbers on the, um. This one right here that goes over basically the taxing. It would bring us down to four point six percent increase in, in our taxes. That can actually gives us though one point one percent range of flexibility, you know, with. It might not be the actual budget number that we're looking at, the three point three, uh, three percent or the two point seven or wherever it was. But what is the citizen going to see, you know, and.
That's what I wanted.
Between five, four point six and five point seven, are we comfortable at, at showing that because. That gives us some flexibility about what that extra five hundred thousand. Can possibly be, because if, if we're, if we're, hey, we're saying that there's a five percent increase. In, you know, in our taxes. Put us at like three point one, two percent budget or al- almost close to three percent. Then, you know, that's. Basically like two hundred and thirty-five thousand. That would remain in the, you know, reserve. You know, I, because what you, and what you talked about is, what concerns me is that. If they say, no, it needs to be two point two percent, or if, you know, the overall of budget or something like that. Then we're talking about, okay, teachers and, and resources for students and things like that, whereas giving them. You know. A, a budget proposal that we still have a little reserve, you know, a little area to be flexible to say, okay, we can. They push back.
The numbers that were postulating with taxpayer increase are just postulations until we know what the grand list is there.
And also until we know what the town council and the RTM have approved for the budget. And that's just starting.
There is one line on the deductions, am I in?
No, I, I, I called.
There's one line on the deductions, number five, reallocate diesel fuel, and the words that jumped out at me were using current rates. And. Nothing wrong with, we're doing that, but we have no idea what rates are going to be one year from now.
Um, so we, we, we can lock in.
We can lock in, okay.
And we did get a good number on that, didn't we? We got a very good number, and we do that as a unified front too.
Okay, so, uh, maybe when we, when you plan up the budget rather than using current rates, using lock-in rates.
That's an easy one, we can easily change that over, it's better terminology.
Jay.
And, and again, I just want to get back to the, um, Matthew's actually correct that individual taxpayer is not going to be able to determine. The increase in their tax based on what we voted, because of the, um. Grand list, however, actual increase paid by the town as a whole will be known. That will be a known figure based on this year versus last year. In terms of how it flows directly to an individual taxpayer, you're absolutely right, none of them are going to know. What that is until the, of the grand list is, is posted, and of course then they're going to have to wait for the fire districts as well, so. Yeah, that's.
Well, and I think that ours is only half of the whole picture, right?
Um, what, forty-six percent.
Right, not even half, so, yeah, yeah, so like I think that we need to be very concerned and very. Wide-eyed about what this means for the taxpayer and for the town.
But I also don't, and I don't, and I'm not suggesting anyone here is doing that. But I think we also have to be making sure that we have what we need to be able to run the district. And once again, I know that that's what we're talking about, but I also don't want us to get stuck on, well, it's going to increase people's taxes by blank, blank, blank. We don't, we don't know that. And so, so to, I think that Dave McBride was I think his point was well taken, because he got us to have this conversation, so I'm very appreciative of that. But we don't know what the implications are going to be that for the And I think last year, the town, when we came in at 2.22, the town side, correct me if I'm wrong, but was up to eight, eight percent, so their half was eight percent and ours was 2.2. Saying out loud. Um, how about if we go through this, and then I have a couple of ideas for what our next steps are. I feel really comfortable saying that we are not ready to vote on a budget. So let's just kind of, because there's a lot of work that was put into this stuff, and I think that I want to hear what, what's, what's, what's the, 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 and inhibit and have, and then let's talk about what the next steps are. So Susan, I'm going to bring that back to you. I think we've taken a look at this.
Yeah, we've talked about this one, which, you know, was at the 5.7.
Hey guys, this has just been really thought-provoking and really great, great information. I've learned actually a lot. So Susan, where are we going?
With the chart I gave you of other Oregon, all the other towns that were, you know, answering the call to the survey, and there weren't that many at this point. You saw a lot of superintendent's budgets filled in. Everything from like, 3-ish percent to looking for the highest one. I think there was like 8, 9% in some cases. And, but the ones that are actually go, going to vote from the board, the Board of Ed now budgets. You see a 5.82% in Cheshire, 3.24 in Glastonbury, 4.39 in Milford, 8.33 in New Britain, you know, and the average of those are coming in at 4.72. So that's just something to be cognizant of, you know, every town is different. Every town gets different kinds of funding. Some of those towns don't get impact aid, probably none of them get impacted, like we get impacted, because we've got the largest military community. So that, I just wanted you to be aware, like I said, it hasn't been totally filled in, but it gives us an idea of what things, what, what's happening in other towns. And we did go over the DOD, so I think, does that seem to make perfect, does that make sense? I understand what you're saying. But I, I have to tell you that, at this point, we are not close to that 19.5 this year.
What's the drop date?
June. But my fear is that we don't have enough military students themselves, and, but we're, we're trying to turn over every rock. If you could see what this team is trying to do to accomplish.
So again, is that criteria for beauty supplement, is it only active-duty military?
19.5%.
What about if they live in Groton and we're paying for them?
We're checking on that. But then what if they're living in Groton and we're not paying, they go to Grasso, or they, you know, they go to other schools.
Good question. What if they work on a military installation, but they're not?
That counts as a piece of it, right?
Yeah, that counts for impact aid.
But not supplemental.
Impact aid comes from the Department of Ed, supplemental comes from the Department of Defense, so the Department of Defense is more concerned about their
They're not concerned, they're not concerned about electric, contract employees.
So the number that Miranda has from Department of Defense is over 1,000 kids, 1,082, I think she said. But we're not certain that, that all of those kids are going to Groton schools. They, they live in the 06340, and 06355, but you can only take half of that, we don't even really know. So really trying to find out who are those people from DOD is not easy, to cross-reference them with our family. So they have this, like I said, every number is different. I've seen from 850-something to 898 to, you know, to 1,082.
Can we get them by the actual crisscross address as opposed to just zip code?
We asked for that, but I don't think they've given us, or they have that data.
So it's interesting that they're like, requiring something for us to, for our funding, yet they don't, they're not really clear.
One year we got games because of audit, after the fact.
Well, they have audits all the time, from what I understand.
Yeah, and some people were, people were putting the proper address at some database.
Right.
A, because they were saying.
0632, or it was the New London.
Yeah, they weren't saying Crystal Lake Road, the official post office addresses. They were using the 12 or something.
Now even has a new name. Right, yeah.
On, on those numbers, what about the kids that go to private school? Does that count towards us or no?
We don't know. I think the secret recipe is, do we support them financially? So those intra-district, inter-district magnets, we do pay for.
But, but sacred heart.
I'm talking, I'm thinking about kids that go up to Lys and Boad, that go across to Williams, go to St. Bernards. You know, they are going across to New London.
Depends on are we paying for them.
And when you said, are we paying for them?
Do we pay for their tuition, or part of their tuition.
So St. Bernards, no, because the parent.
We're still going to ask that question. We're going to still ask that question.
Not to St. Beach.
We don't do for St. Beach with sacred heart, we do.
Only because sacred hearts.
Within the district, and by law, you have to provide transportation.
Was there anything else out of this? I mean, the only other thing was that I see was the sheet that had the total operating cost, including grants, because the board had asked us, what, what is the actual dollar amount that we're using? And that's my whole thou shall not supplant, that we get the categorical grants and the competitive grants for specific reasons. And we plan for those, the competitive ones especially. And we receive them because of the nature of the grant and how we've written it and what we're doing with it. So we have to spend it on those things. We can't go and spend and take money from a categorical or competitive grant and just say, well, I'm going to start taking care of our fuel oil. It's not in there, and I do that and I go to jail, so I don't want to go there. So you really have to be very careful in planning for these grants and even if they're title grants and you get them every year, even those numbers fluctuate for us. So this was at the board's request a few years ago, we were able to add up what the FY, FY23 budget was for operating, then the categorical grants altogether, the competitive and the coronavirus grants. The 3Cs, I call them. And you see that it's over the 81. What was it, 83 million that we proposed?
That's going to go.
And then the town portion of the Board of Ed budget. We have operating budget, including grants. We have revenues received directly by the board to us.
Yep, both the grants I get.
Yep.
Come directly.
Yep. And then the revenue received directly by the town of Groton. And that's been, that's been the steady thing, that's been like, flat. So the flatter that stays, and the more our costs go up, the taxpayer is going to be paying more.
Andrea.
I wanted to go back just for a moment to the private school idea, and I wanted to ask if homeschooling in any way has any kind of an impact on the numbers?
Yes, absolutely. During COVID, and I should get that number, because I was filling out those forms on a daily basis. We had, you know, many, many more students, hundreds more, that were being homeschooled during that time.
I wonder how many have continued.
Well, there probably have been some that have continued. But I think a lot have come back or moved. It's harder to keep track. But that's a good question. Right, right. That's why I said, let's just look at the DOD money, let's look at their numbers. They know who's here, who's stationed here. Help us to find those folks, you know.
And what's the date for that? The SIS is September 1st.
Only October, it's actually September 29th, because the day we had to calculate. So any kid who was not here yet, you know, doesn't count for us. If those families left October 2nd, we get to keep those, but they might not be. Yes. But is that magic one date? Like I was saying, wouldn't it be great if we could make sure as part of our process when we're enrolling kids, that they fill out their free and reduced lunch, which we, we try to do. And they fill out their, you know, impact aid, but you can't do it prematurely. It has to be done on that date. Collecting those numbers on that date.
That's the survey date, but there's no reason why we couldn't collect the information as to whether or not they're a military family, so that we could subsequently do a source check if they don't fill out the forms.
Right. And I think we do ask that question on council.
Yeah, just have to make sure that.
It's just not always so accurate. And then the last part of this calculation of percent of property tax collected that supports Board of Ed budget. Even if we knew last year or the year before what the percentage was and what that looked like, I mean, based, but it's based on the mill rate, it's based on grand lists. And that was last year's grand list, and it might not look the same this year. So it's hard to predict. So that was at the last year, was that, or this current year is that 46.4%? When the portion of the budget that the town of Groton had to pay, the taxpayers, was at 48 million.
There had been some discussion of another boat being posted here and getting another full crew.
I asked that question. So the Columbia class is being built here. And so the people who are working on the Columbia class, getting it ready, those count for us. They have to be working on the boat, they had to be working on the boat on October 1 or September 29, you know. And there are many that are going to be stationed here, and I think Miranda and I calculated to the tune of maybe 14 to 16 possible submarines, but there's only enough room for about 14 to 16, and so submarines come in and out, they get deployed, but then they go get stationed in other places where there's room for them. So it's a hard target, but I, when I talked to the captain just this weekend, he said to me that the boats are being built now, and by the time they get full crews, we're seeing a few years out. And we won't have all of them all at once, we'll have a few of them at a time coming in, adding to the the ones we have, or the ones that, you know, they're coming and going all the time.
Okay, so, and then there's a bunch of questions I got answered in the board notes by Susan.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate that. We really worked hard on that, to try to get that information out, and you know, you saw that in the John Burt section, I gave him the same thing and asked him to pass that along, and the questions and answers.
Okay, so this went to John, to.
John got everything, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, okay, good.
And then Bruce Jones had asked me, I saw him, you know, at the Black History Day on Saturday, and he asked about the numbers, and that's why I put, Ken had already put this together, and I said, I think it's 46. He says, I knew you'd know it off the top of your head. And I said, but it, you know, it varies, and next year is like a predictor again. This is, you know, if we filled all of the seats in preschool, this is what it would look like, you know, so. So, and if you count the out-of-district kids, which I think, as long as I'm responsible for paying for them, especially their special ed costs, they belong to us in some way or another, so we should be able to count, count for them.
Absolutely.
And even if the state is able to support and pay back those costs for inter-district magnets, they're not going to pay back special ed. I mean, we're going to still be responsible for the special ed costs, so.
Okay, so where does the board want to go from here? So we have agreed that we just are not at that place to do a budget, to, to vote on the budget, so that's off the table. And can I just have a consensus that people agree that we can remove that from the budget, I mean, from the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm hearing we need some more data.
Okay, so then let's talk about that, because we, we've got a couple things going. Monday and Tuesday is a school holiday, or the school is off. So the next time that we could actually convene would be on a Wednesday. Now, we had, we are meeting on the 27th, which is our regular board meeting. And so my question to the board is this. Do we set up another meeting to go over the data? Like, do we feel like we're going to need to have a separate time to talk about the stuff that we are looking for, which I, I'm going to pause. And let's get clear about what the data we need to have in order to make the decision.
Are we talking, is that the 22nd? What's the date that we're coming back? Yeah, 22nd.
So let's not worry about the date yet, let's talk about what is, what is the data that we're asking Susan and Ken and staff to come together on.
Because I think we need to see what it looks like, the additional 500,000, the reallocation of those two areas that, that Who are you?
Jay.
Jay.
I know, I haven't been here for a while, so.
That line 180 and 106, if we add that, take that.
Anything else that we can, you know, is any place else?
Is there, one more, one second, is there, is there appetite for us to kind of take a look at like that, and then also taking? So let's just say, let's just take, your, your suggestion was the five, the extra 500,000. Should, would it be, do we have an appetite for Ken to say, okay, board, how about you take, we can take another 300 and we add 100,000 to the OPEB?
Yes, I can do the number out.
Right, right. So what is, so maybe what the question is, is what is that number? I mean, Jay, it's not that I don't trust your, your work, it's just, I, I want to go to the person that will be kept up at night.
I was up, I slept three hours last night thinking of this, like thinking of other ways.
But so, but, you know, to know what that, what that looks like, and then also see what it would look like if we needed to take a little bit more of that health reserve and move it towards the OPEB to, to try to not make it whole, but at least give, boost it up a little bit.
I would like to see more years of data.
Well, he's obviously going to, you're going to obviously, I can't speak for you, but you're going to need to look at that to be able to give us what that comfortable number is, knowing that what we're feeling pressured on is the fact that whatever increase it is, it is going to be that much more that we know for the tax, the, the taxpayer, we want to make sure that we're being stewards of that. Bev, go ahead. So you want the information about the town?
These two accounts, OPEB and health insurance, as you said, it might be that with the.
It's the opposite, yeah. They, they don't have a lot that they're sitting on for the health insurance, but they have a lot more in OPEB.
Really, okay. So we don't need that information if we have that?
Well, I would rather, I'm speaking of, you know, I mean, I'd rather see what.
That was as a point you tried, I don't know where we currently have.
Okay, so would you be, guys, be willing to get that information? Beverly, you are the lone board member online. Is there other information that you would want us to have the staff gather for making a vote? Bev, I'm just going to talk, and you can like interrupt if you're, if you would like to say something. Um, okay, so that's the information that we want the staff, that we feel that if we got that information, we could make, and you would give us what the percentage would look like with all that, okay. All right, my question to the board, this, the second, oh, Matthew, I asked you. Okay, um, is, do we feel that we need to reconvene next week? Even if it's by Zoom? To have the conversation about this?
I would like to, because I think I can get it ready and I want, I think we're on a roll and I think, yeah, we've got momentum.
So my, my, then my part B to that question is, when I put together the agenda with Susan tomorrow, can we have that conversation about all the information? And I'm also gonna throw on a, an agenda item that we would vote if we're ready, vote if we're ready. I, okay.
The twenty-second.
That's the twenty-second. And if people are fine with Zoom, I think we would appreciate that.
Our staff who travel so far away. I'm just around the corner. I'm fine.
That's right. Is it? Yes, it is. Yeah. And we saved that there on purpose, right?
Yep.
I, I, I honestly got the impression from you, Ken, that we were thinking of maybe having one of the flying.
But we can't because it's, um, it is, it's a school holiday. So those schools close.
So we, no matter what, we still.
That's right. And I'm, I might've said those dates being.
No, you didn't. I just, the way I was understanding.
Right. So the next full day, um, next week for schools would be the twenty-third Wednesday and that we're gonna have a Zoom meeting. That's true as well.
Yes.
So Wednesday, the twenty-second, we are going to have a meeting at six o'clock on Zoom, um, where we're gonna go through this stuff. Um, I think, I think, I, I, I heard Zoom. I think I heard Zoom. Um, we can. And then we can always put things up. Sometimes it's easier to follow a Zoom than a hybrid. You know, you have these things to, and I'll make sure I get them out to you, right, Ken? You think we can do that by the end of the week for everybody?
May I say, guys, I have just been really honored about these conversations that we've had for the district, um, to making sure that we keep the district cool. Um, I really appreciate, I really appreciate the work that Susan, your staff has done. Um, and the work, I, I need to tell you in talking to other board members throughout the district, this is an anomaly that the board doesn't actually go along with the superintendent line by line by line. So that I'm very appreciative of, of the transparency that we offer our town, um, as, as board members. So once again, thank you so much. This has been, this has been, I've learned a lot. So for me personally, I think I appreciate that.
Ken, before, can I just make it a nice one?
Sure.
Um, our very own Carmita Hodge has been asked to be on a panel.
State panel.
State panel to discuss the, uh, Black and Latino studies.
It's an instrumental in piloting and creating that thing.
Yeah. So we'll get this out to, there's a way that it's a Zoom as well. It's in person in Hartford and there's a Zoom and it's on the twenty-third next week. And it, but it's in the middle of the day. It, I think it's at two o'clock, two to three. We'll get the information out. It'll be nice if you'll support her.
In that case, motion to reject.
Have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I end up meeting for your.